The application of Justin Hathaway. Is it Justin or John?
Well, note right now that Justin is not here, but he appears within the fifteen minutes.
The property located at nine six two Marshmallow Road, Kirkville, New York, S L meeting sixteen dash one dash twenty point one five. For a special use permit pursuant to his own schedule of the town zoning law to allow a building thirty feet by forty feet for engine repair and sale. The above application is open to inspection at the town office building seven five zero seven, Fort Rocha, New York during regular business hours. Persons wishing to appear at such hearing may do so by person, attorney, or other representative. I gotta find out if it's John or Justin.
Okay, somebody can give Jerry the high sign and they, there is somebody out there.
Okay. Yes, I have Justin.
Justin, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, it's just someone if you wanna keep up.
Okay, yeah.
Didn't we, sure, did we do one of these once summer and there was no air? We had the house full.
Yeah.
We're gonna mess up.
Yeah, we're gonna mess up.
If they're all, yeah, no more than, no more than three, yeah.
So, how are you?
We can do shifts, whatever.
I mean, I've even talked to Jerry to say like some, like after group's done, let her know.
Counselor, good evening.
You guys got a good setup going. Well done.
Everybody gonna?
We're starting the halfway here, they're speaking out there, I guess.
What's that?
Did you think you'd tranquilize her?
Not yet. I'm gonna wait another half hour. I don't wanna wear it on.
Three people plus Justin.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he, yeah, he needs to stay, he needs to go instead. Thank, thank, you got four seats.
John, do you wanna directly with the town board or county board members?
Please, please, thanks, Phil. Thank you. Well, thanks, great.
Yeah, I just went down that way today. I've been doing it, I go to close that way, so, could group five, the construction?
Yep. I do, I do that quite often.
What's that?
He announced.
Come up the back way, I can't stand and scoot down canal or route.
Where are they?
I read.
I come down canal.
At all?
Then I scoot up.
Nobody's here, I read the thing.
Where's the apple again?
Backside of the, yeah, and I go up on the sheet and five.
Oh, my gosh. No, I don't go, I don't go that far, I go to, I don't go on so, I go towards. I go, you know, look for that.
Yes.
Hey, John, John, Wendy, just see it on the camera, it's right behind you.
I got a big bald spot back in my head, so.
No, you're clear to read, I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, I'm used to that because we, I've been doing all these Zoom calls and we're constantly on, on video camera.
Do you, do you have an image, do you have an image of what the camera's taking?
Yes.
So that we'd make sure we block, we don't block something and we get.
Yeah, actually, I can show you just to make sure, if you guys want me to change it, I can.
I mean, it's fine, whatever you're doing.
Well, I'm just happy it's connected. But basically, this is like a camera, oh, hang on. I'm just trying to walk around, this area is a dead zone, but it's basically just the whole, whole area. So, I, we'll see if you guys, if you will, and see John, a little bit.
Will this be voices in the dark?
Yes.
I got you, that's good enough, that's good enough.
Yes, exactly.
Justin, how are you?
Is John Sirusoli?
Hey. I'm sorry.
John Sirusoli, this one.
Okay, where are the other three?
She's getting ready now.
Okay.
Where's John?
John, Justin's right here.
John, John Sirusoli.
Oh, no, he won't be here until, probably at seven, he may not make the hearings.
Okay.
What I'm gonna ask you to do when they get in here, because it is a hearing, that's who we're gonna listen to until quarter of. You're gonna be on the agenda at the very beginning, you're the first one on the agenda tonight, a little after seven o'clock.
Yep.
So you just wanna, whenever the hearing is over, here, you just wanna sit tight, we've got another hearing, okay? Maybe very long one, they're cutting that one, but these people or any whoever else is here will hear them. And then we'll close that hearing somewhere around quarter of. But you sit tight until, until the regular meeting starts, then we'll talk to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
But what I'm gonna ask you to do when these folks come in, I want you to explain to them what you're doing. If you wish, I'll give you your site map and you can actually show them unless you've got another copy, you have the updated one that you did.
Yep.
Okay, show them what you're, show them what you're doing, okay? Not a hundred percent sure they understand what you're doing.
Yes, I do believe the paperwork that I got in the mail wasn't little, a little inaccurate, so I imagine there's probably some, some, uh, miscommunication.
Okay, alright, good. So we're just waiting for those folks. Uh, you, we could do a brief medley of show tunes, uh.
I'll start.
You want, are you on the side?
No, we thought, let's go, let's all go to the movies, that's what, that's what the start does.
Folks, we got, yeah, we got, we got three empties there somewhere, or four, yep, you could use that, have a seat there for a second. Okay, as weird as this is, alright, we're having a public hearing on the application of Mr. Hathaway for the project he has down on Marshmallow Road. What I'm gonna have Mr. Hathaway take a couple of seconds here and just explain to you what he is doing. And he can show you a map if he wishes, is that. You're not really gonna have any interaction with him at this point, he's just gonna be able to present what he's, what he's doing. Then, you're gonna, you can make any comments you want to, to the board and we're kinda scattered around here, okay? Including the town attorney and there's code enforcement people in the back. And, uh, um, and Jerry's code enforcement and enforcer of the parking lot and what have you and. So we, this is kind of, this is kind of the weird thing we have here tonight. So, what you do is you just raise your hand, you give your name, your address. Secretary will write that down and record that, cause that'll go into the minutes, and then you speak your piece, and, uh, we go from there, okay? And we got, we all the time that you need to, uh, feel that you've expressed yourself, okay? So, go ahead, Justin.
Alright, I plan on doing a thirty by forty pole barn with three bays in it for small engine repair. Lawnmowers, four-wheelers, gas skis, that type of stuff. Um, I have a whole site plan of everything, I may eventually do, um, like riding lawnmower, use sales. So I have parking lot that I will be doing with a sign, um, for displaying, displaying anything that I'm selling. And then, um, obviously, with the way the land is laid out, I have to raise the building up in order to get out of floodplain. So I plan on bringing in some fill and then I have giant ditches on both sides of the property. So that way I can prevent any kind of spill over into the neighboring properties for any kind of water that might get pushed out. Um, I plan on doing, it's gonna be a solo man operation, maybe down the road, I might have one person working for me just so I don't have to work as much and sort of focus more on running the business. And then, I have, um, the, my business hours are gonna be somewhere between eight to five, Monday to Friday.
Yeah.
Um, sometimes I'll probably start to be working four days a week depending on how much business I run. Um, I plan on doing primarily pickup and delivery. So, once a week I'll probably go through, I'll log with my pickup truck and a trailer and pick up a few machines to work on throughout the week. And obviously, I'm here, I have all my septic and everything drawn up so I can be able to coat it and everything. And then I also have, um, I'm gonna be doing fenced in area for any kind of customers' machines or anything. So that way there isn't machines laying out in the parking lot with parts missing off of them. So that way everything's kinda hidden so it looks neat from the road. I believe that's just about everything.
What do your operating hours?
Eight to five.
How many days a week?
Five.
Okay, ready?
Yep.
Okay, we'll entertain any of you want, wanna say something, go ahead. The three of you that have come, through the name, the name.
I'm here with her, I don't live out there in the city.
Okay. Alright, we're down to two.
Our good time, he's gotta have a raised septic, cause I live.
Can I need the name?
Alright.
We need your name and address, please.
Your name and address, please.
Helen Turturro, eleven sixty-three Marshmallow Road, I'm on the other end towards Justin Ridge. And we had to have a raised septic, and, and, uh, what's his name?
John.
Jeff?
Mr. Hathaway, Jonathan Hathaway.
Mr. Hathaway, we put in a raised, a raised septic?
Yeah, I have. Yep, I have a plan for the septic to be put in.
Cause it's wet there.
I have Dennis Pubs is the septic, he owns a septic company on Marshmallows Road. He has already came in and taken a look at it and we will be doing a perk test to determine if I need a raised bed, which I imagine. I already planned for the fact that I was probably gonna need a raised bed, but I already have that all planned out and ready to go. But I'll know more once I get the approval and do my elevation surveys and my perk testing.
Yes, ma'am.
My, my name is Karen, K A R E, and Shurbek, S H B R B E C K. And I live at nine forty-three Marshmallow Road. You know what I really am concerned about, as I've worked, I've worked out there for forty-six years. It has been a very quiet, nice neighborhood, and I have already heard noise from your place twice on a, on a weekend, on either Saturday night or Sunday night, I'm in my house all alone, my husband passed away four years ago. And I heard this hmm hmm hmm, all this noise, and it really scared me, I go out in the backyard, I'm outdoors all the time in the good weather. You know, I have to take care of the lawn myself, I have to do all the weeding and everything. And the noise is gonna drive me nuts, I walk my dog up the road and back every single day. And I, and I know there's gonna be noise, I won't be able to walk my dog up, up the road that way, you know? And I wander around the neighborhood and I have a bunch of signatures and all of these people, they feel the same way. And so, and, I mean, I'm just telling you the truth, you know?
Ma'am, let me, let me try to, just explain something. In the town years ago, when the zoning was redone and this is nine, uh, late eighties, okay? Uh, late seventies, excuse me, and there was a zone because, uh, I forgot the man's name, but down there there was a gentleman that, uh.
Petruless, Petruless?
Petruless, Petruless, that, if you were, been there, you probably were there.
I worked for him, I was his secretary.
Okay. Yeah, well, he was, uh, he was selling, uh, horse blood to, to.
Yes.
To, uh.
Yes.
Um.
Bristol.
That's it, alright, he needed to have that as an industrial zone.
Oh.
So that area, unlike out in the middle of a big ag area, nowhere, is an industrial zone. In that industrial zone is allowed everything that's in the business zone by allowing it in the zoning with a special use permit. They came, he comes in front of us, we look at site plan, we can, we can talk about noise with him and how he could mitigate that, I mean, there's, he's got a three bay garage here that, uh, things could be done inside and, uh, that, that would mitigate that, maybe the outside, that might be different. But there, it is allowed with conditions, that's, that's, that's one of the problems. We, we've had overtures for things that would be a little more obnoxious than this, but they never came to fruition. But that, that's a potential down there, I, I, I hear you, I know what you're saying.
I mean, I know.
This is the rea, but this is the reality, this is the reality of it, and he has every right to, has every right to make application. Yes, sir.
So what is the purpose of this?
I'm sorry?
What is the purpose of this then, my son notices out it is, that's it?
No, no, he, it doesn't mean it's a slam dunk, but it means that if you were in an ag zone, he couldn't do that. He couldn't even apply, because it's not allowed in an ag zone. But in the zone that this is, it is an allowed use with a special use permit, this process that we're going through.
And I do believe, I don't know, I believe the noise ordinance is till ten o'clock. But usually, I'm not sure exactly what you heard, it might have been me with the tractor mowing, because I try to mow especially when it's really hot out.
Something was gunning, back and forth, back and forth, a lawnmower doesn't, you know, people mowing their lawn, I mean, I'm, I'm used to that, it didn't bother me.
Could have been someone else, ma'am, that's what he said.
No, I followed it down there.
Oh, okay.
Right, to find out for sure, I went, and that's another thing, you know, I'm out in the yard all the time and I sit there, but you know what? If it gets too loud, I'll just call the police, I don't know what else to do.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what it was or if I was even there for it, but I know it could have possibly been a four wheeler. I know the guy that owns the property right next to me owns the property behind me as well. And there is trails that come through my property, and I know he, he does a lot of duck hunting back there. So he does a lot of back and forth, but he's got it side by side and he's got a couple other machines that he runs up back into the swamp. He runs through my property to get to it, so I'm not sure if maybe that's what you're hearing or. But I usually, if I'm up there in the past eight or eight thirty, I try not to do anything that makes any noise. If I'm doing anything, it's, I try to do everything by hand or, you know, I try to leave by eight or eight thirty so that way I can go home. Cause I have, I have a four-year-old and a newborn at the house, so I don't really like being up at the property all hours of the, of the night. So usually I try not to be even out there at that time. So his proposed hours of operation, his application say eight to five.
Yep.
So if he, if he keeps, depending what the board does, if he keeps his work within the hours he suggested, I think it's, if, because it's zoned industrial, it could be up to you guys acceptable to limit that, those repair hours, cause it's a repair, a small engine repair.
He, he doesn't, you know, doesn't necessarily, he, he has an interior to the building that would, you know, he doesn't have to be outside necessarily. These are not big machines that he's dealing with, he's, easily can get them in, they're not.
Yep.
Get them in, get them undercover when he does that kind of work. Yeah, regretfully, there is no or, there is really no noise, noise audience in town, yes?
Oh, my God. Across the street from me lives a, a policeman, you know, and she said that her, her dogs can't stand a lot of noise, you know, and either. She was bound to be here tonight, but she's working, so.
Okay. We hear, we hear your, we hear your concerns, we'll, we'll see what we can do to address that.
And if you ever have any issues, by all means, if I'm up there, you're welcome to come up and let me know if you're trying to do something and it is a little too loud. You can obviously help and let me know and I'll do my best to quiet everything down so you can do whatever it is you need to do.
Do we have any other comments? Is there, is there anyone else out there, Phil, for this hearing?
I don't believe so, I can do it.
Just give us a high sign and we'll close. We'll close the hearing. What we're going to do, and, uh, you're not gonna, you folks are gonna leave. Justin's gonna stay because he's gonna be on the agenda for the regular meeting, which will start somewhere shortly after seven. We're good, okay, so what we're gonna do is close this hearing. Now, as, this is kind of a weird time in a public access, normally you could stay right here, you could stay right here for the whole action, see the board, the, the board has to do this in public, et cetera. What's happening is everything's being taped and audio. Now, the other, the, the other shoe is to make that accessible to you folks so that you could watch that. You could act, you'll watch the action that we take and the discussion we have with Justin, okay? But I cannot tell you exactly how that will be obtainable, it might be up to a couple of weeks before, before that is. You can certainly call in tomorrow or something, if we take action tonight, call into the codes office and they will tell you what went on, okay? As far as that, but for you to hear the actual board members talk to the council, et cetera, et cetera, that, that may be delayed, but that's, that's, we can't do anything about that right now, okay? So, you folks, we thank you very much for your participation and, uh, we're gonna move on from here, okay? Do we have, uh? Do we have anyone for the hearing, second hearing? We do.
Okay.
And that's, that's gonna be Congress. You do. Okay, well, alright, I don't care, just bring them in, bring them in, they're, they're, you're only talking to hearings. They're, they're the only ones that could do that. You're, you're gonna have the next hearing, I don't, how many people's gonna show up for the next hearing?
I think there's just two.
Huh?
I think there's just two.
Okay. John, alright.
Oh, it might be.
No, go ahead, tell them, I don't care, it's fine with me.
If you people would like to wait for, uh, we don't, uh, talking to nobody.
Alright.
There's nobody out.
Okay.
We might catch them all, but.
I mean, but, I think you're fine, I, I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay.
Do you want, I need a motion.
Okay, we need a motion to close the hearing, please.
I'll start there.
There, uh, any discussion concerning that motion? Now, hearing any others in favor?
Aye.
Closed, hearing is closed, okay, you're just gonna cool it, Justin, for two minutes. Okay, Chris is here, it's Chris Kimberley, Kimberley here.
Yes.
He's here, do we have anybody for his hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
More Justin.
Yeah, Justin can move, move to the corner or something. When the music stops, make sure you got a cheer.
Uh, they're, uh, they're kind of, of course, they're concerned about noise.
Should I read this now?
Hmm, I, you can add, I, I, I.
Frank, should I read the notes?
Oh, sure, please.
A public hearing, they hold at the town soul and planning board underlines seven, two thousand twenty, at six forty-five PM. The town Sullivan offices at seven five zero seven, eight Fort Rocha, New York. To consider the application of Chris Kimberley, his property located at fifteen thirty-five, Rocha, Lake Erie. S L P being thirty-two dash one dash fifty-seven, for a special use permit pursuant to his zoning schedule, the town Sullivan zoning law, to allow a forty foot by a hundred foot steel open span bar for storage. The above application is open to inspection at the town office building seven five zero seven, Fort Rocha, New York during regular business hours. Persons wishing to appear at such hearing may do so by person, attorney, or other representative.
Do we, just as a question, do we have this kind of a meeting, do we need to get like a pad with everyone's name and address?
Wouldn't hurt.
In case we ever have to do a, a kind of check.
You have a record on those, the two people that here that gave their names and addresses. But if you, if you had a pad or something, you know, I know, if you walk in, that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Phil, Phil, Phil.
If you can sign in. It's a good idea. Great, but by the way, just for the bulk of these, when, when we bring them back around, we gotta do, seek, we gotta do environmental review for bulk, just for an idea.
Yep, yep. Uh, I don't think, as I look through kilks, I don't, don't know if it was ever done.
Yeah, we'll double check.
That one, that one was an old, that's an old one, we're going back, uh, we're going back ten months.
Yeah.
And, pardon?
We can look at it, if we haven't done it, we'll have to.
I didn't, I, I didn't see that one and I didn't see, uh.
Yeah, I've got good notes, I'll look for mine.
Okay. Pardon? Right, well, I should have left those, that lady, we should have. Oh, okay.
Oh, she there?
Oh, good.
Do you, Jerry, have a pad out there too, with the ladies?
Right, but we got people in here too.
Right, I'm saying she was.
Yeah, she, she's out there, uh, I asked her if she had a bullhorn, but she, somehow she caught us. Yeah, but everybody in here probably don't sign that, then, then we got everybody covered.
Are you trying, can I, can I?
Hi, folks. Come on right up, come on right up front here. Go ahead. Alright, now. Is there, is, is there someone?
Yeah, I'm gonna go get them right now.
Okay, alright, so while you're getting them, let me prop these guys. Alright, you're entitled to a, this is kind of a crazy way we're doing this, but this is what, this is what amounts to. You're entitled to at least a fifteen minute hearing and we've never, whoever shows up that wants to speak, we make sure that everybody gets time to do it. What I would advise you to do is when they come in, I'll kind of say to you, why don't you introduce your project? So you start around and really address them, you're not gonna, I'm gonna invite, you're not gonna get into a, a one-to-one to them, okay? You're just gonna try to tell them what you're trying to do.
Okay.
Lots of times, stuff is lost in translation and what they think you're going to do and what you are gonna do is not the same.
Right.
Okay, that's the whole point of that.
Okay.
To, to make that clear, and if they have a, you know, a, a site qu, question, we, you know, and you're okay with that, you don't have to answer that, but, you know, it's best to do it, then we'll have the hearing or whatever it is, and then we'll close that. You will be the second item on the agenda, okay? You can stay here, both of you, both of you can stay here if you wish, okay? Uh, and, well, because you're in here, and then we'll dismiss anybody else. And then, we'll start our regular meeting, we'll handle the two of you, and then we've got like five others down the road, okay? But no hearings, you're the only hearings. Okay, folks, what? Uh, pardon? No, they're gonna, if we're gonna start a meeting at seven o'clock, you're gonna have Justin. As soon as the meeting is over, Justin is done and they're off. Cause it's just gonna be the two of them. Right, I mean, why, you could send them out and bring them back, but I mean, I don't see any great reason to do that. Just, at this point. Okay, the three of you folks that have come in, you're, this is a public hearing, and normally what we would do is we'd say, okay, uh, you're, you, during this block of time, you've got a chance to say whatever you need, you want to say, and you're gonna address that to the board. Prior to this, Chris is gonna tell you a little bit about what his project, what he's, what he's asking to do. He is looking for a special use permit because that property has a special use permit for the activity years ago. And now he's expanding that special use permit, so that's why he's in this process. Then, when he's done, you can raise your hand, give your name, your address, so the secretary can record that, and you can address your comments to the board. Now, a little weird, but the board is here, 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 and these two individuals up front. That's the board secretary, this is the board attorney. So we're the ones that eventually will make some type of decision on the application, okay? And if there's not, there's not necessarily a discourse with Chris, then if there's something we can, we can clear up or we can, we can expound upon, we will, okay? And we'll take whatever time we need for you people to feel comfortable and choose subjects you wanna say, okay? Alright, Chris. Tell them what, tell them what you're doing.
Um, I'm proposing putting up a storage facility for a building, uh, pretty grown substantial.
We've grown substantially and uh, just need enough space. And, not exactly what it's going to be, but something something like that.
Where's it going? Tell them where it's going on, on the property.
Um. So, I see that there, you guys are familiar with the property?
Oh, it's going by the road.
Yeah, so it's like that stone driveway that's over there, basically?
In front of the pond.
Yeah.
Where you've already dropped. Where you've already dropped the land.
Right.
We gotta, we gotta get names for everybody.
It's not.
We're not recording his comments right away.
No.
You already got three trailers and a truck parked over there.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, sir.
It's not getting put, it's just not getting put.
No. He's just, he's describing his project, you, are you, are you, okay, done with that? Okay, sir, if you'd like to give your name and address and address the board with your concerns, go ahead.
Raymond J. Smith and my wife, we own the property that butts today. Over these years, they've been filling in more and more, the water table's going up. And last summer, this had nothing to do with it, they were fertilizing the raised beds and rest of the grass. Next day it rains, where does it go? In two oh nine lake. How long can you keep doing it?
Okay?
We actually stopped, uh, having.
Can't do it this year.
No, I, I had them stop doing it, it was just getting overrun with weeds and everything, so I was just trying to keep the place presentable, you know what I mean? So I had a lawn service going in.
There's no fertilizer coming over. There, there's no.
Okay, folks, you gotta have a name. How about you, sir?
Turner Smith. I live at sixteen thirty-six, I own the property next to Don, the family.
Is this on fileer?
Yes, it is, for the property right next to them.
Okay.
Um, my only concern was that it was going to get put back against our property and trees were gonna have to get cleared. Yeah, I'm an, I'm an arborist, I've had them for five years, I have an education and uh, trees would have to get taken down, that would affect the water table even more, especially because a lot of the species are willow trees and willows soak up a lot of the flood table.
Yeah.
But now that I've found out it's not going at the back of the property, I have no good concerns.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Betty Jo Smith and I live at thirteen oh two Piler Road. Um, my husband and I, we own, directed to him and then my son and I own, that was my mother and father's, and so he and I own the house. It's down a little ways, but he will eventually get property. But my concern was any more fill being brought in, because when he put, brought fill in, and I've got pictures of what it did, when he brought the fill in, where he's got his trailers and things now. It substantially caused flooding to our property, it came right up to the roads, there's a little section on the other side of Shenango Creek in between the town building, um, the town garage. And it comes right up to the road there and it floods, so my concern was more fill in there is going to make it substantially worse. So, if it's just put there, the damage has been done with what it has been brought in there. And I don't object if the building is gonna go on something like that, but I would object to more fill being brought in.
Okay, take a look at the fill, take a look at the fill. Anything else, folks? Alright, here's, we're, I'm gonna ask the board to close this hearing. Uh, now, normally, you'd stay here, and you could hear us, we start our regular meeting, technically, we start around seven. Then, we, we must take any action on this application or anybody else's in a public, in a public venue. Now, that's, 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 that description is being skewed a little bit. So, what, what is gonna happen is, everything is being taped. Right now, we're getting videotapes, there's audiotape. Now, at some point, and that's, I can't tell you, that, how that is going to be available to you. It's not streaming, you're not gonna be able to go home, go to a website and be able to pick up the streaming now. Somewhere along the line, we'll make that available, make that available to people that want to view the whole, the whole meeting. We've got another, after this, these we've, this doing two, we've got another five, five applicants here tonight. Okay, so, we'll be here a while. So, having said that, what we're gonna do is close, ask, close the hearing, you folks are gonna leave. I'm asking these guys to stay, we're gonna start the regular meeting, we're gonna, Mr. Hathaway is number two on the agenda, these guys are number one, and these guys are number two. And then, you can either sit in the parking lot and ask somebody when they come out, or you can give us a call tomorrow or something, and we'll let you know, we'll let you know if we.
When are we making decisions on this?
Pardon?
When, when are we making decisions?
Probably, I would assume, you know, I'm making, I'm here shortly.
Suggestion.
Pardon?
I have a suggestion, which is, they're here, they're sitting right there, rather than scoot them out there and find out tomorrow, if you're gonna vote.
Well, then, but I've already told, I've already told, I've already told the people that were sitting here for the first hearing, and they've gone, they would have just as much right to sit here.
That's true.
And I, I don't wanna do that.
Okay.
If we did it, I'd find we could have crowded the room, if, if that's what we chose to do. Okay, this is how we're gonna have to do it. May I have a, may I have a, uh, a most to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
Is there any discussion concerning that? Now, hearing any, all is in favor?
Aye.
Right. Okay. Neighbors, thank you very much, and uh, as somebody would say, well, be in touch, okay? Okay, now, what we're gonna do is we're gonna start the regular, the regular meeting for the town of Sullivan Planing Board for the month of July two thousand twenty. The minutes for the June meeting, which was a distance, socially distanced meeting, too, very similar to this one, have been circulated to the members. Uh, I would entertain any additions or corrections to those minutes. If not, I'll take motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, there is a tentative agenda then circulated to, to the board, and you'll see that there's, uh, and the board has seen this prior to the night. Uh, you see, we've got seven, seven, um, applicants on here, and the two hearings that we have, it should be Mr. Hustleton. Uh, and Peter Kilts, old business, and then new business is Michelle Rollinger, Susan Sims, who will be, uh, Rick, Rick Mars, I think. And uh, then my last one is the P D D referral for Jeff Taylor, okay? And I can't ask if there's somebody else that wants to get on the agenda because they're not in. What's that number? Okay, having said that, Justin, I guess, Justin, you don't have to be back in that far corner. Maybe you should just come up, come up and get around the screen or get over here somewhere, just without. Okay. Okay, board, where are you, here? We got a G M L for that? No, we don't, he, cause he didn't have to have a G M L, he's not within five hundred feet of us. State, state, state or county highway or, or, or political boundary. You go figure that. Okay, we, what, what do you have there, councilor, you've got your notes, we've got hours of operation?
So, here's what I have, we've, we've got a proposal for a small engine repair business. Um, to occur on industrial zone property, it would entail, it would entail a thirty by forty pole barn structure on the site to be used as the shop. With business hours ranging from eight A M at the earliest to five P M, Monday through Friday, closed on the weekends. Um, at the prior meeting, I, I believe he demonstrated sufficient parking on the site. He's proposing a four by eight sign. Uh, public water is available and the, and the septic system will be used, it is located at a hundred year flood plain. Um, I think septic design's gonna have to be figured out, although I think I had it, it was, that was sewers were available, so what's the?
No doubt then.
Well, no.
No, I'm sorry. I apologize, Jeff. Uh, yes, okay, um. So, we're gonna, we're gonna have to do seeker, which we'll do in a moment, uh, but we also wanna discuss the following impacts, which were, we covered hours. Uh, we covered, what the lighting, what, what lighting do we say we're gonna have on the building?
Um, I put on the paperwork or on the site plan, there's gonna be, um, floodlights facing down on, basically just in front of the building, not really in the parking lot, but. Um, one on three sides of the building, so that we're sufficient lighting for surveillance. Um, and then the only other lighting that there's really gonna be is the, the sign is gonna be lit, but it's gonna be lightly lit. I chose darker colors on the sign so that it wouldn't be too bright to just.
How are you lighting it?
What's that?
How are you lighting the sign?
Um, probably with L E D internal lights in the sign, it'll be a two face sign with lights inside it.
Okay, let's talk about that sign.
That's emanating, light emanating from inside the sign, like a glowing sign, or?
That's, that's what you say, I think.
Yes.
Let's talk about this sign. Alright. This is one of those situations where you, you're, you're on firm ground as far as the zoning, okay? But, people have lived in that area, and again, the only reason that was a, was not a, was this guy, this guy was drawing blood from horses and selling them to Bristol.
Yep.
Now, for some reason or another, I have no idea, that's neither here nor there, that ended up to be an industrial zone, okay? So, you're reaping the benefits of that, to be able to site down there.
Yep.
But, basically, it's residential. We ought to see what we could do to mitigate that impact. And a four by eight sign, you're not, you're, you're gonna be a destination. Somebody comes to you, you're, they're gonna follow you on GPS, it isn't gonna be the casual driver that says, oh, there's the ca- there's the guy.
Yeah.
Okay? So, I don't think you need a four by eight sign.
Yeah, I was not, when I did four by eight, I was just, like how you had said before, if I in, ever in the future wanted to do a parking lot for, for sales, I didn't get that approved.
Well, let's, let's go, you, maybe you have a soft in the blow now. And have a small sign, if you need to come back at another time, let's do it. We need to, we don't have it on your plan, but I know we did talk about a little sales.
Yeah.
I don't, it's up to the board how you wanna handle this, if you do at all. But, we need to either get the language in there, or we probably need to get some kind of a little limit to what you can have out there, you're not gonna have, you're not gonna have, uh. You know, forty Ferris mowers or, you know, or something like that.
Yeah, they're, those are.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but on, on the sales, I thought about this too, when you mentioned it, was that discussed previously, that there'd be sales?
We did, I, we, we mentioned it, we mentioned it at the last, I, last, yeah, you said, down the road.
Perfect, that's what, that was my next question. Okay, I'm ready to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did discuss.
The lot that, on the updated site plan, I did draw it in a lot for sales, and it's twenty foot by twenty-eight foot.
By the sign?
Yes, right where the sign is.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I got you, I was talking right now, yep, I got you.
Do we know if that, if that display area is, is it located off of the highway right of way? Cause it can't be in the highway right of way, any kind of sales, the signage and the sales, uh, is.
Now, that, that's a, that's a good question, that's probably a, who knows? Who knows?
Only mention it.
Miles Glen Road, I mean, I would say it's somewhere in the three rod road, but uh, that's. Yeah, you'd have, we'd have to find that out. You, okay, what he's saying is, you, you've gotta find out where the road right of way is. Your deed might be to the center of the road, for all I know, and I would, that wouldn't, that wouldn't surprise us.
Yeah.
But then again, I would certainly run that by the highway guy before you put up any signs up near the road, make sure he's comfortable with that.
Yeah.
He's, he's, you're good.
Is the city water on your side?
Yes, there, well, the main line runs across the street.
Yeah.
And there's three parcels, and there is, um, I believe they had put an entrance feed under the roads into each one of the parcels.
But the water, the water mains on the other side of the road.
The water main is on the other side of the road and crosses underneath the road.
So, there's probably the center line, there's gotta be a right of way there.
Pardon?
There's gotta have a water right of way, so. And you'll be able to, in the center of the road over.
Right. That road got blown up a couple of times.
Yeah, washed out.
Oh, it's a little bit blown up.
Yeah, okay, uh, so I, I downside that sign.
Yeah, I was thinking.
What can you live with?
More realistically, I was thinking like three by five, maybe even smaller.
Okay. I mean, board, put your, and I would, I would offlight it. Put something down.
Aiming up onto it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And put it on, I, I mean.
I didn't know if that was gonna be.
Yeah, even if you, even if you put it on, I know how that would work. You know, it's, it's kinda toned down at night, you know, or, or not.
Timer or something.
Yeah, well, you could do it with timer, but, I wouldn't have that glare on all night long.
I would do whatever is the dimmest possible way to do it, I wasn't sure if having a light shining on the sign.
But that's the way our code really reads, we don't want interior, you know, it's a little antiquated, but that's, that's.
Yeah, then that's fine, that's what I'll do.
So, what time will the light be, the, the light that illuminates the sign, what time will that be shut off? Cause we're gonna have to have something specific for these guys to enforce.
Nine, eight, nine?
What, what time is business closed?
Business closes at five.
Okay. And during the day, you can read it anywhere without it'll be, be lighted, it's gonna be up there.
Yeah, you wouldn't see the lights anyway.
Why don't we say during, af- af- outside of business hours? But then again, it's always gonna be daylight.
Yeah, during the summer, in the winter time it'd get dark around about five. I was thinking maybe like eight, eight or nine.
Okay, let's go for eight.
Good for me.
Okay, no earlier than eight in the morning? Eight to eight?
Yep.
Eight to eight. Okay, board, something else?
What about sales, what are we gonna do?
Well, okay, yeah, what? Come up with some parameters. How many units are you, or you can say to him, he doesn't really wanna do it right today, he can come back, once he gets his feet on the ground, and modify it.
Put in a proposal for.
Yeah, and what we'll do is modify your permit.
Yep.
I mean, that would be your application. That way you know, you don't even know, you don't have, you don't have franchise or anything, right, dear?
No.
No, not at this point.
No.
Who knows? Pardon, you wanna do it that way?
Yeah, this time.
That way then, if we can talk about sign is, and, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
Let's go with this, alright? That'll get you break the ground, hopefully you can, uh, you and the neighbors can, you know, find him happy ground there.
Yeah.
Have some good trees.
Would, would, would that pole barn gonna have any kind of insulation on the interior, or, or walls, just kind of dead in the sound?
Yeah. Um. I'm gonna do, um, I believe it's gonna be four inch, um, like foam board insulation, that's usually, it's the easiest way to insulate something like that, and that should be, it should be pretty nice.
That's code issue, guys?
He's gonna have to adhere to the New York State Energy Code.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta follow that.
Yeah.
Those, those guys will dictate that.
So, we don't know if, then we don't know if it's gonna be four inch foam board insulation?
It'll probably be P S K paper with the, uh, the white, white paper insulation. That way you just add it up to your top.
Roll it out.
But it will be insulated, now, we can also say that he will make, uh, make a good faith effort to do all work inside, therefore mitigating any noise.
I can't, I can't draw in good faith effort, cause I, I can't, they can't enforce good faith effort.
Okay. Okay.
It's nice, I, I get your saying.
Alright.
So, it's either gonna be, it's gonna be, potentially, cause it's up to you, that, do you want, do you want him to be able to work on these things and test them out outdoors, or do you want all of it done on the inside of the?
He's gotta be able to go outside sometimes.
But somebody's gotta enforce it, you've gotta decide what you want him to do, and we can.
No, let's not even address it.
You might wanna have, have those guys hear that, though.
Pardon?
They're those two guys.
They can't, they can't, they can't really enforce it, we don't, we can't come up with the parameters, if, if we don't come up with enforceable parameters, then we'd be better off not saying anything, because.
Then it's unenforceable.
That's correct.
Okay.
That would be, that'd be correct, but I think we're asking the gentleman here, that this is the, this is the intent. He comes back again for something else, and we've got an issue, then we'll have to, we'll have to do that, we'll have to.
Yeah.
I mean, can't, how are you gonna say to him, cause I don't know what he's gonna have to go out and try, he, he's gonna have to take some outdoors somewhere and run, run the machine, he's not gonna run it around his garage.
Like, for instance, two cycle engines running inside without having a super, super heavy duty, um, ventilation fan
Yeah.
would smoke out the whole shop.
I get it.
Yeah.
So.
Most of the stuff I work on that's like that is jet skis, and they get ran on the hose for two to three minutes,
Oh, yeah.
and then they get shipped down to the lake and tested out on the water, so.
So, so you guys just have to consider the impacts of this, this gentleman's business on the neighborhood? It's zoned industrial, right? So the people that live out on that neighborhood, that, all their properties own industrial?
Not necessarily.
How big is the industrial zone?
It's, it's fair, I can't tell you, it's on the map, man. Right there, see that red dot?
But it's multiple properties.
Yeah, I would say, yeah.
I believe most, most of the southern side of the street.
Then the best, the.
That's it, is it, Phil?
So the best you can do is try to mitigate what's almost undeniably gonna be some sound impact, it's a small engine repair. It would be virtually impossible for there not to be any noise impact, that's the nature of the business.
Right.
So, if you don't wanna move the, the, them running engines solely inside the, the building, cause you don't, we don't like that, then you're probably, your other mitigation technique would be to limit the hours when he can test the, the, the equipment, which is, you know, whatever hours you want.
Eight to five.
Eight to five, but that's it, that's it, but if it, if he's working late one night and it's eight o'clock and he's running those, those engines, that's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe what you say is that, that there should, there'll be no, no testing of engines.
Outside of business hours?
Beyond.
I have ran into that before, um, cause right now I, I work on some stuff in my house as well, so if I am doing anything where it's notably late, I'll work on as much as I can that night, and then I will not start anything until the next day, and then I fire, fire them up and make sure that they run.
How you get around it, that really, you're gonna be your issue, what, what we're saying is, you, you, you gotta do it in business hours, eight to five.
Yep.
So if somebody says you're out there at nine o'clock, nine o'clock, then, you know, especially something, it's gonna hunker on, something, you know.
Yep.
But, uh, if they got, they got right to, they got right to the threat. Okay, do you think we've covered all our issues here?
Hmm, let's see, we got our hours, we got uplet sign, what was the final size of the sign?
Three by five.
Three by five.
Offlet.
Off, uplet, uplet, right? Offlet, uplet, up, shooting up at the thing. Okay.
We shoot the dog.
We got, we got our parking, uh, the noise is being addressed to the hours of the operation. Um, do you guys, do you have enough detail on the, on the building and where the, where the water's coming off the roof and where it's headed to?
He's got.
Yeah, he's got the swells and.
Yeah, he's got the swells.
Got the swells in there.
He's got the stitching on, he's got a swell.
Okay, and then, uh, a gentleman was concerned about the septic system, so he, it almost all, what we, what we say is that it has to be an approved septic system installed. Let me see what else I got here.
I would say Ray's.
I believe the parcel next door to me, they did do a perp test on it, and I'm not sure, I believe he said that it was approved for a standard septic system, but I will be having.
It doesn't rain in the next couple of weeks, the, the, next couple of weeks are gonna be good, you'd, you'd probably get a win.
The other one is no, no sales without further planning board approval.
That's correct, that's correct.
What did I forget, anything, anybody know what I forgot? We still gotta do, we'll build it into one big resolution.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't know, we'll have to see, um, this is a big, this is, this probably should have a, a formal resolution, because if you get into enforcement, but.
Okay.
I can do one, or else.
Okay, well, we should do it.
You gotta give me a little bit of time, but we're getting backed up now, everything's opening back up. But, no, I'll get it, okay, so, you guys are lead agency, this is an unlisted action, uh, so, uh, here are the questions, you give me the answers, um. Will the PROX action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan?
No.
Yeah.
Will the PROX action result in a change in the use or intensity of the used land?
No.
Will the PROX action impair the character quality of the community? And you were considering this in light of the conditions that you're gonna adopt, we have to agree to that. Okay, you don't have a critical environmental area, will the PROX result in a change in the existing level of traffic? What, or, or, or mass transit, no biking or walkway, no.
No, but.
Everybody hear me okay?
It should be, it should also be, excuse me, just so you don't lose that, he also indicated, you're gonna do.